Ninth work session of the Baltimore County Planning Board is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Board, and will now start our meeting with the roll call to account for all the board members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hafer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Excuse, he's waiting for the baby.
Oh, okay. Good reason.
I don't think that is, he could call in.
He's at the hospital.
All right, Mr. Halepka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson? Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Perlo?
Aye.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Great to see you all tonight. I would like to welcome all the board members and the members of the public that are present with us, joining us this evening for the first comprehensive zoning map process for 2024 work session. This evening, our objective is to review and vote on all the issues in District One and Two in an orderly manner. We will first vote on all the items that are not sequestered for further discussion for tonight. If an issue were not raised as sequestered, we assume the Board would like to accept the staff's recommendation. As such, we will take a vote to accept the staff's recommendations on all those issues that are not sequestered. After we take sequestered issues one at a time in chronological order, I will ask the board member who requested an item to be sequestered to share their questions or their perspectives on why they did not agree with the staff's recommendation. The staff then can give their rationale on the county's position, and then the board members will have an opportunity to make a motion as they see fit, and then we will have a vote. We will begin with all District One issues, and then we will move on to District Two. Board members, our sequestered issue for District One includes the following issues: 1-001-003-007-008, 009, 013, 015, 016, 017, 018, 019, 022, 025, and 026. Before I begin, do we have any additional issues we need to add to the sequestered list for District One? Not hearing any? At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the staff's recommendation for all non-sequestered in the District One.
Be it moved that the Planning Board accepts the recommendations of the Planning Board staff for the log of issues in District One, with the exception of the sequestered issues just listed by Chairwoman Hafford.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Now that we have a second, I'll do a roll call, the name. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yeah.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton's not here. Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson?
He's not here either.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Mr. Warren, yes, also.
Ms. Panero? Okay, Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. We will now go one by one through the sequestered issues, beginning with Issue 1-001, sequestered Mr. Perlo? Do you want to discuss your issue? Thank you.
I think I'm okay now. I just wanted to cover myself that I could have discussions on it, so I think that we can vote on it based on the staff approval now.
Is anybody against that?
Now, I would make the motion to accept the staff recommendations for 1-001.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Planning staff, I presume I still need to do a roll call? Planning staff? Amy?
Yes, do a roll call, please, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
I'll reclude myself from the vote.
Okay. Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next is Issue 1-003. And that was raised by Ms. Brophy?
Hi, okay, thanks, Chairwoman Hafford. So I guess mine was more just questions for the planning staff, as well as just to clarify. So at the public hearing, the petitioner spoke and said that it was basically a house that's operated as five residential units right now and has been that way for over seventy years. I mean, I'm not 100% sure the seventy years is fully accurate, but it does say that they want to intend to keep the property the same way. And I noticed planning comments had that the zoning change was consistent with Master Plan 2030, but it doesn't align with Baltimore County goals regarding land use growth management, et cetera. So I'm trying to understand, is it that they're operating as like a non-conforming use right now? Or, you know, I don't, I don't know why we would not allow somebody to do something if they've been doing something for seventy years and it conforms with master plan. I think that's my question.
Yeah, I also pulled this issue, and I agree 100%. We had, we had four people out that were all in favor, and they were the tenants that didn't want to have to be moved out of their property. So I will let staff answer, but I would make a motion to accept the requested DR 16 for the two point, or .29 acres.
Good evening, Board, this is Joseph Wiley. I am handling First and Second District for CZMP. The reason that we said it was consistent, because the use itself is residential, it's existing, so the use itself is not really going to change, but we said we went against that this would just be a spot zone in the area of, there's a DR 55.
Okay, but how are they operating the way they are now, Joseph? And I'm not sure, Joseph, if you can answer that. My concern is, you know, similar to what Todd and I said, if they've been operating this way for so long, is it just they're under like a special exception, like a non-conforming use, or, or what's the situation?
The note here say that it was a non-conforming use.
So can they continue to operate it that way? Or wouldn't it be better for them to change it to the correct zoning so that they're no longer non-conforming?
Also, it was my understanding that they were getting pressure from the county because they were non-conforming.
No, I don't, I don't work for the zoning department, but typically you can continue to operate as long as you don't expand or, or those kinds of things. But as Joe said, we looked at it, you know, from a zoning and land use point of view, and a spot zone, you know, was probably our biggest concern.
Mr. Halepka, you also raised this issue, is there any concerns you have?
I think it's the same, same issues that Todd and Emily have brought forward, that if it's, if it's been operating this way for years, seems like it's been a non-conform use. And I can't remember if they said that part of the issue is as a non-conforming, if they wanted to try and borrow against it or whatnot, that there, that would raise a red flag. I didn't hear, you know, I don't recall hearing much opposition in terms of the way it's currently functioning. I think some people had some issues about parking, but that's always the case. I mean, it seems to have been operating without major issues for a number of decades, so.
Hi, this is Ngon from the planning department. We also have received comments from PAI saying that changing the zoning to DR 16 is not enough to permit the five non-conforming units. They will also need to be approved to a special hearing.
Yes, thank you, Ngon, for bringing that up, because I saw that as well. So the square footage that PAI had the comment about looks like it's less than .29 acres just by, you know, 43,000 square feet, one acre, et cetera, et cetera. So by my math, I was thinking the same thing, so .3 acres really only gives them four units, not five. So, so you're saying that even if we grant them the DR 16, they're still going to have to go through a special public hearing, right?
According to PAI comments, yes.
Okay, Ms. Brophy, you're the one, one of the ones that raised this issue, how would you like to proceed?
So, I mean, I would, I would like to make a motion that we recommend the, the DR 16 that was requested. That way, you know, at least there's the additional density for the three or four units per PAI's comment, and then the petitioner at that time could go through the other motions that, you know, Ms. Ngon had mentioned about a special hearing with the public.
I second that.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, 1-007, brought up by Mr. Warren and Mr. Perlo.
Howard, I'll let you go first.
Well, based on where this is located, you see the building that's there now, you've got a lot of major redevelopment that's going to take place here along Security, Rolling, 695 and all. Their request to me to have an AS, I don't know enough about the tenants in the building, but I believe that the location is a proper location for AS. You've heard me for many, many years that I believe on the major carters, the AS should be granted, and that's the way I feel right here as well. There's been, you know, no staff agreement there, but, you know, I believe that where it is, is not going to affect, you know, anybody at that point. There's a need for stations, we'll need stations for even, you know, electric cars to be able to charge up, and if that's what it becomes in the future, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Warren, anything you want to add?
Yeah, this is, this is part of a, a much larger issue that we, we put in and have worked closely with, with, with the County Council member, Pat Young, on this, and we, we're going to propose another zoning for this whole site later on and on Number 22, and that would be to make the CT part of the town center, which is what we're doing at Security. So I would make the motion to, at this point, to just accept staff recommendations or, or put the CT on at this point. It's, it's going to be redundant, because I'm going to do it as part of, of 22.
Would either one of you like to make a motion on this? Are there any other questions?
Nancy?
Yes.
I think because this is, even though it's part of another issue, it has its own, you know, request and recommendation, I think we do need to get a motion on the zone for this one. We can't just say for 20, you know, wait for 22. I think we need to get a motion for what this one should be.
Great, Amy. So gentlemen, do you want to make a motion on 1-007?
The County Council, or the County Councilman's not going to allow a gas station or a car wash on the site, so I wouldn't, in the interim of the CT, I would make the motion that we accept staff recommendations.
Second.
Nancy, real quick, if I could, this is not part of 22, so.
I thought, I thought this was included in 22. Should have been.
No, it's, it's its own separate issue. Somebody had raised this piece earlier than when the councilman came in to raise his area. So as you can see, it's the yellow highlighted area, and 22 is kind of next to it, starting over here.
Well, then I, then I need to change my, I'm going to recommend that we make this
Been a motion, a second, Madam Chairman.
Right now, we have a motion and a second from where you're original, Todd, so.
I want to modify my emotion.
Okay, Todd wants to withdraw his first motion, and then Todd, make a motion.
I would like to modify my motion to, to have this be CT.
All right.
So are you saying BMCT? Because CT is a district.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to be clear on that.
Sorry, apologize.
Nancy, may I, may I ask a question whether or not the property is located in a town
center? Because CT can only be applied within a town center designation.
Yeah, that was going to be my next, my question, you know, to the staff, how do they feel about it?
Well, I, I'm going to, the adjacent property, I'm going to request that also to go into CT, which is adjacent to the mall, which is the CT zoning.
Half of the property is included in the security town center. Just this piece from this blue line over, this, this piece is not in the security town
Mr. Warren, you understand part of the property is not in the town center?
Right. Since it's adjacent, can't we add it to that? Isn't that part of what we're doing?
I think the staff should make that determination, let us know.
Madam Chairman, the motion was moved and seconded, and it can be amended, but the secondor.
He amended it, so.
No, the second, the second person that did a second would have to withdraw or ask, okay, you did amend it, okay.
Yeah, and.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, now, Mr. Warren, would you please make your motion?
I would like, I would like this to be, the zoning to be BMCT.
And so is that okay with the staff?
I can't comment on that, because I, I don't know what's required for designation of town center. If this is not within that boundary, you know, we can't fix that here.
So does that mean that we can defer the item?
Um, we've never deferred an item during a work session, so I also don't know.
I think since he's made a motion, we need to see if we have a second. This is not a typical way you would handle a property like this. So, does any, does anyone want to make a second to Mr. Warren's motion? Sir, any discussion?
I think before we vote on this, because the, the staff is saying that it's not a part of the town center, so how can that be established before we can vote on?
So can I, can I make a suggestion, Todd, and let me know if you're okay with this? You'd have to amend it again, since we're discussing. So staff recommended that the entire parcel be zoned BM. Can we amend it so that the entire parcel will be BM per staff recommendation, but the portion that is in the CT per Jen Meacham screenshot there would be BMCT? And then that way, we could vote on it as is, and then figure out whether or not you can extend that CT to the other portion. That, that's just my suggestion, if you like that, Todd.
Yeah, I'll support that, that's fine. I just, my, my concern is, I'm trying to stop there to be a gas station or a car wash on that, so BM does not give them that.
No, it doesn't. And then if you get CT on a majority of it, I mean, Jen, do you mind covering the part of the parcel that is part of the CT again, on that screenshot? Yeah, see how like, a majority of it is, except for that tiny little piece of that parking lot? I mean, both buildings.
I'll let Pat, Pat can move that and do whatever he wants later. I'm fine with that motion, so if you want to make that motion, I'll second that.
Is that okay, Madam Chair? You have a motion. Yeah, we have a motion, we have a motion already, and we have a second.
Right.
And we have to take a vote on the motion and the second that we have, and if it's voted down, then we'll take another motion in a second.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Your, the motion is, the vote should be on the amendment, not on the original. The original was not withdrawn by the secondor. You have a motion to amend, so you have to vote on the amendment first.
All right. I withdraw my second. Does that make it easier?
Okay, that's it.
All right.
Is Todd withdrawing his motion, then?
I will withdraw my motion and let, let Emily make the motion.
Thank you.
So I make a motion to accept staff recommendation as BM on the entire parcel, but would like to amend the portion of the parcel that's within the town center district to BMCT. So it would be all BM, but then that portion that's allowed, and I apologize, I don't know the acres, to be BMCT.
Second.
Second. Okay, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson? Wolfson says yes. Thank you. Lordy. Okay, 1-008, Ms. Brophy and Mr. Perlo.
I withdraw this as my sequester. I don't have any more questions about this one, I'm not sure if you do, Howard.
I do not, so I also would withdraw my sequester.
I would make a recommendation to accept staff recommendations.
All right, well.
Second.
All right, anyone opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This was raised by Ms. Brophy, Mr. Warren, and Mr. Perlo.
If, if you don't mind, Emily, and I'm going to take a swing at this, because I've spent a bunch of time on the site. So this is a site across the street, across 95 from 1-008. This is a sliver of, of 1.74 acres, that the hope is that there could be either a sign put on there or some kind of facility for highway or, for like BG&E. Council supports this, and I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion to provide them with BM on the 1.74 acres.
Any discussion?
So again, how does staff feel about that?
So, I'm sorry, was somebody saying?
All right.
Yes, no, this is nine, Steve.
Nine. It's like eight, I said.
Yes, sorry. It's outside the urdle, this, this doesn't have any street frontage other than 95. You know, when the state was to put a facility here, they don't have to follow the zoning, so they don't need it.
So what are you saying?
Our recommendation was to keep the existing zoning.
So, any discussion? Am I correct that this is a landlocked piece of property with no access, no right-of-way?
It has no direct street frontage, I'm not sure about right-of-way, though.
It, it does say no direct access, just so you know, Kathy, on, on, on one of the reports on the city. So it does have, it is landlocked, like Tom, like Todd said, so there's no access to it. I think, I mean, I mean, I'll, I know you already had discussion, Nancy, but I mean, I do second Todd's motion in respect to if they want to put something to the public benefit on this site. I don't think the petitioner is intending to put, you know, like a retail or something on there for business major use. I think it was just like he said, for something of public service, like a tower or something like. or something like, you know, public service amenity. So I'm not sure if, um, staff has a, a different zoning that that would work on that's not business major that could possibly help the petitioner.
What issue are we at again?
I'm sorry, Wayne, can you say that?
What was said before, that if it's either the state or BGE, they're not bound by the zoning in the same way. BM opens up many other uses beyond what the petitioner may say is in their immediate future.
Right, but what about something like a private?
A cell tower.
Tower or something like that?
Cell towers, I believe, are regulated to the Public Service Commission.
If they want a lease from a private, um, space, you know, like in a shopping center or in something like this, they wouldn't be able to do that with the existing RC5 zoning. So is there like a, is there like a compromise between the BM and the RC5 to allow them to just to put something like that in like this landlocked piece?
It also gives them the ability to put a highway sign up also. I'm not going to fight this huge, I mean, so I think Pat's going to give it to him, but I'm just going through the motion, so. I think we had a first and a second. Can we have a vote then?
What was the motion again?
The motion was to give them the, the, um, allow them the BM zoning.
But, and we had, so we had a second to that?
Yeah, Emily made a second.
I seconded it, yeah. Okay.
Staff recommendation is to leave it as it is.
Well, I was just wondering if Director Lafferty had any other alternative zone before we took the vote. Is there anything else? Director Lafferty, or is that it?
I don't know of another zone. I'm not sure if Ginnay or Joe may have any insight to that.
I don't know.
No, I don't, I don't know. I do know they put cell towers out in the rural zones in the north part of the county, so I'm sure they could put one here.
We have them in the western part as well, in the RC 5.5 and RC2.
Oh, so it can be put in RC, Kathy?
It exists, yes.
Yeah, you've seen it, okay.
Okay, we have a first, a motion and a second. I'm going to do a roll call unless there's any further discussion. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
No.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hafer?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Heinel?
No.
Mr. Halipka?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
No.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Okay, motion does not pass.
Madam Chair, can I amend my vote, do you know?
Yes, yes, you can.
No.
May I have another motion?
I move, we accept staff recommendation.
I second that.
Okay, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson's?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yep.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next up is, um, issue 1-013, and that was brought up by Mr. Warren and Ms. Panero. Todd, give us a start.
Yeah, this is a, a site on Route 40 that, uh, Pat would like to convert over from, uh, OR1 and, and OR, um, uh, to BM CCC, and I would make that proposal.
To give some background, um, well, first of all, it's located in the Baltimore National Bank Commercial Revitalization District. So that's obviously right for, for BM. It's the property, they're proposing a full service, I believe, car wash with a cafe. And I don't remember if there was much community, uh, input one way or the other with this. But if this were to be approved, BM, well, I would be recommending BM CCC. Um, Todd, I'm not sure what you would, would want that.
I, I, I recommended BM CCC, so.
Okay, that was what was positioned, uh, requested. Um, it would still have to be, um, it would still have to go through the full approval process with the administrative law judge. So the community would still have, uh, a lot of input if this zoning were to be approved. It is currently located, if the property is located next to a car dealership, so it's not putting up car washes is certainly not foreign to a car dealership.
It, it fits the, the, the area there. It's, and it'll be a big improvement to it, so.
Is there any other discussion? If not, can we hear from the staff?
Sorry, I was getting my notes together here. I'm sorry, I apologize.
No problem, Jessup.
Uh, we did have one person sign up to speak, but they were absent, so they did not speak. Looking through everything.
So, could someone remind me, what is the OR zone again?
Office residential, isn't it?
Yeah. That's what I thought.
I think part of the concern had to do with the surrounding residential and whether or not you have compatible zoning as a transition to the residential communities that are behind it and adjacent to it. I think that was one of the main concerns.
And doesn't that OR1, um, allow a density of 5.5? So, you know, you're looking at almost 10 housing units in that space.
It does look like we were concerned with the creeping of the BCC back off of Route 40.
Mr. Wiley. All right, are there any other questions from anyone? If not hearing any, can we have a motion?
Repeat the motion.
I made a motion to, to grant BM CCC.
Second.
Okay, now that we have a motion and a second, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hafer?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Motion does not carry? May, may we have a second motion?
I believe from speaking with the petitioner that they would be happy with BLCCC. So instead of business major, it would be business well.
All right, um, we have another motion for BLCC on issue 10133. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Um, so how does the staff, again, the staff, how do they feel about it?
I think, um, Mr. Ray, the staff makes their, they made their recommendations and sent them out to us.
Right, I understand.
So we have another motion in a second. So I think we need to take a vote on that.
Can I ask a question? Does anybody know what's directly ahead of us on Baltimore National Bank adjacent?
There's the, it's the mall.
The Sam's Club. It's a Lowe's.
Where it says BM GCC. Where the arrow just was.
That, yeah, that, that's like a hotel, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, I thought maybe it was a dealership or something that.
Well, the de, the dealership's adjacent to it. This is a car dealership parking lot, is what this is.
Where is the dealership?
It's the old, uh, it's kind of, it's the single building to the left there of the one that's, it's the old Musselman's Dodge.
Right where somebody has put an arrow.
Yep.
Okay, do we have a motion and we have a second?
Just so everybody knows, I believe it's currently being used as like a backup for storage for the car dealership. So putting something, you know, a cafe along with a car wash, you know, it's certainly not residential, but it certainly fits with Route 40 and our dealership adjacent.
Okay, after that discussion, does everybody clearly understand the motion?
No.
So, nope. Um, Ms. Panero, would you mind making the motion again?
Yes, the motion is to, um, request zoning, or we have the zoning be BLCCC.
Okay, and then do we have a second?
I seconded it.
Okay, now, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
What is the current zone?
So, one is.
Most of it's OR1. Almost.
The entire thing, yeah. 1.96 acres is OR1. It's point zero four.
No.
Okay, um, Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
If the motion carries. Next up is item 1-015, and that was brought up by Mr. Perlo.
Wait till the map comes up. Okay, I believe that this is a gas station that's been operating, um, for about, I don't know, almost 70 years here on the corner, um, but does not have AS. It's, I guess, would be a non-conforming use, and they just want to bring it in to what it really is being used now as a gas station and have their AS, so they don't have any problems, um, or questions in the future at that point. And I think that's a reasonable request. But it's been there for 60, 70 years.
Any discussion? Not hearing any, um?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that the zoning be BLAS 1-015.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero? Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Motion carries.
I don't get the vote?
I thought you, sorry, Mr. Perlo, I thought you did.
Yes.
Boy, I think you're a tough crowd tonight, guys. All right, we've got it. Thank you, motion carries. Next up is 1-016, and that is Ms. Panero and Mr. Warren.
So for this one, I had just questioned, um, with, with, before I knew this, we could read the staff recommendations, I just have questions of why the staff decided to not, uh, offer this, or to go through, but to donate a car, the location of this property, um, in my opinion, if not here, where, um, considering what's already there? So I want to know why the staff, um, what the staff's views on that.
I'm sorry, you were cutting in and out a little bit there.
I'm just what, how you came to the conclusion.
Sorry, you, you asked if, why we kept.
She's wondering why our recommendation is what it is, why we did not, um, recommend to grant the request.
So with this one, we had some community opposition. We had a group at the meeting came up. Um, only four people signed up to speak back to back, but only two of them actually did. Um, I'm, I'm still getting emails. I just received an email yesterday about this from the community in opposition against this. Apparently, there was supposed to be an agreement that they're not supposed to be parking buses back up in here. But apparently, some of the neighbors were complaining that the community, that this business is parking buses back up in there. So, you know, the people who, when they have their windows open, they're getting diesel fumes into their homes, and they're afraid if they get this changed, it's, uh, they're just going to be parking basically right up on the parking lot, the property lines.
I think that's, if they, well, first of all, it's owned by Woodlawn Motor Coach, so are they, is any part of their property zoned other than GR55? Because I would imagine Woodlawn Motor Coach is not density residential 5.5.
No, we're, the property is BR.
Okay. Um, so they want to change, they want to have the 1.72 acres match what's already zoned?
Yes, if you look at the map, you can see it looks, it appears wooded at this point, at least on this aerial.
Okay.
So I, I've talked to the, to the positioners on this, um, and along with the council. My only amendment to. My only amendment to this would be that we give them a 15-foot forest buffer and a, and a a man fence, a solid fence between the forest buffer and the buses.
Some of their property is zoned DR55. You can see the property line is the green, so there is a small portion of the back that is zoned DR55 and the rest of it's zoned BL, the portion in the front.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Jen, is the, is the request only for that second half in the back then, not for?
Yeah, it's for the piece in the back and then this other property which is owned by Jason Weiner trustee. It's owned by a different owner.
Is that part of this issue?
That's part of this issue, yes.
Okay.
I thought though you showed when you did the screenshot a moment ago, that the first, the top part adjacent to the other built-out area like that would be our.
The parcel, these are the parcel lines, so HBJCLLC owns this property line. And that's the property line. Half of their property is BR, the other half is DR55 in the very back, back here. This is DR55, which is in the issue. This part's BR, which is not an issue. And then this other secondary property that's owned by someone else is DR55 and they include it in their issue boundary. That piece is owned by someone else and also included in the issue boundary.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I guess I have a question. The part that's furthest to the back that's owned by, by the other entity, any sense how deep that is? The whole thing is only 1.7 acres, so.
It's, um, let's see, feet.
About half of it, so. 0.75, 0.8 of an acre, looks like about half of it.
150 feet.
Trying to get a sense, I mean, Todd was talking about doing a buffer, so I'm just thinking, is the buffer basically that other property?
So the property on the back's 150 feet?
Across or deep?
Um, it's across, so like this, do you see how it's drawing the line?
So that's 150.
Yeah.
And so the other parts well, less than half that.
This piece is 100, like 100 feet?
What's the property to the north that looks like it has trucks parked on it or something?
That's part of this property that's in the issue boundary, the northern property. So this is the northern property and that's HBJKLLC.
Those are school buses. Those are the roofs of school buses.
It's what the Woodlawn Motor Coach resides, that's their property.
Okay, just wanted to know.
And you said the current zone of the front was what, Jen? The, the front green part that you're messing?
BR, BR.
Okay, so they're basically requesting the back portion match the front is what they're asking, except for that additional piece that's somebody else. I mean, I'm never really a fan of somebody petitioning and rezoning someone else's. I don't know, Katie, if you're okay with just amending to allow them to only rezone what they own, that portion.
Well, maybe they intend to purchase that portion if it gets rezoned.
I believe that's the purpose.
Yeah, I totally got it. Honest, I just had I didn't know who owned what. I just had questions about this property from the first time it presented, because
Got it.
Knowing where it is on Route 40, I'm like, where else do you, if not here, where?
Again, I, the only way I can support it is with a buffer, a 15-foot buffer and a, and a man fence to, to block that.
Well, we can't require a fence in the comprehensive zoning. You can, you can limit, you could create a buffer that remains DR55. But we, it's the development process that's going to see if they get a fence or not.
We can't covet it. That would be something that Pat would have to do.
We we don't, we don't do covet. If, if the county, if the county council wants to make that a condition of its approval, that's up to the county council.
Okay. That's fine then. Then I, I would, I would be willing to move forward with a 15-foot. I guess 5.5 buffer.
5.5 zoning for the 15-foot perimeter on the west, east, and south sides. Is that what you're saying, Todd?
Yes.
15 feet, do, if somebody's worried about diesel exhaust.
Does, does someone want to, is there, if there's not any other discussion on this, does someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion. Am I allowed to make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion that a, the perimeter on the north on the west, south, and east side of the issue for a 15-foot depth be zoned DR5.5 and the remainder zoned. What are they asking? BR.
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 I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
No, because diesel fumes know no boundaries.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Hint, um, Mr. Hinton, I'm sorry. Mr. Halepka.
No.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka.
I'm not going to vote twice.
I'm sorry. Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Pirlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Thank you all. Okay, now on to 1-017, and this was brought up by Mr. Pirlo.
I will remove my sequester on it.
Okay.
Make the motion to make, to accept the staff recommendations of BMCC.
I'll second that.
All right. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
I recuse my vote.
Okay. Ms. German.
Yeah.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Pirlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, on to 1-018. And this was brought up by Mr. Warren and Ms. Panero.
I'm going to wait until the map comes up, because I think that shows it nicely. So this property is owned, and the adjacent property is owned by Merit Properties. They want to have this property zoned mainly MLIM. Keep a very, very small portion, 0.02 DR55. This is going to be charged for a parking lot, no new structure, no new building. They just want it to be additional parking for that existing building.
It's an industrial park that's there currently, so it's just additional parking for the existing industrial park, so. And they've owned these two adjacent, these parcels for a long time, so.
It makes sense because it butts up to Silver, uh, Salford Spring.
Any questions?
What is the, do we know the yellow area to the right of those two or three houses in the middle? Just looks like it's included somehow in, in 1-018. Is it? That's what I want to just be sure of.
I think we had, we had to do a sliver to make it work, wasn't that?
Yes, so it would be, these properties here are within the boundary. And then there's a sliver that cuts across over to this side. It's all owned by, I think all the properties are owned by Merit.
Okay, just wanted to understand.
So you want to surround those three houses with this zoning of the parking lot? Is that the idea?
The parking's already there. It's just, it's just an addition to the existing parking.
But kind of like Howard said, this piece to the right, Jen's arrow, is kind of on that whole piece is part of it, not just the sliver on the bottom, right?
Um, it's, these properties here, so this, this sliver is part of properties that aren't owned by Merit. They're individually owned parcels, but then these properties over here are owned by Merit and these properties over here are owned by Merit.
So you're actually cutting the residential properties with a sliver of MLIM?
Um, yeah, well, those properties are already half zoned MLIM, so this is one of the properties. You can see the, the back half is zoned MLIM and the front half is zoned DR5.5.
Is that true for the adjacent ones, the one to the right, Jen?
Yes, that's all three of those. They have MLIM.
Oh, okay.
Do, do we know if those houses are owner occupied or if they're rentals?
Um, the
I, I have that. Jen, do you have the addresses turned on? The two right-hand ones are apparently homeowner occupied. I also received emails from directly across the street at 216, 218, and 220 against this issue. And just so everybody knows, this is the dead end portion of Salford Spring Road. This is not the, the major portion, the thoroughfare through Arbutus.
Isn't there parking already existing all, all through there on the left-hand part of the property? It looks like majority of the property to the left already is a parking lot.
It has a, it has a street through it, a driveway with parking. You can see it there.
So Todd, may I ask, are they looking to expand their business footprint so they need more parking?
No, they need, they need additional parking for the, for the, the industrial park that's there currently. So this is just an expansion of the parking. It's not an expansion of the facility as I've been told.
But why would they need more if they, if they meet the parking requirements? It's not typical for business to redevelop and add more parking if it's not necessary.
They, they are, they're saying that they have inadequate parking.
It's a, it's not a requirement, it's a want.
I believe that there's a plan to put buffers around those three houses.
It's a need for more parking for the tenants, as I've been told when I put the issue in, so.
I believe that building is also gone, the big building right next to the issue.
The left or to the right that you're talking about, which big building?
Uh, that, that whole building right underneath the issue is gone.
It's been demolished. I just saw it the other week.
Got it.
So they are going to rebuild something.
But that's
That's why they need more parking.
It's the Baltimore Business Interchange. It's a flex industrial development plan that Merit's already received county approval for.
So they own the 1018 as well, which they're trying to turn into parking, not a building to provide for their project that's been there and will be there after it's approved by the county. Is that correct?
I believe they own everything below the yellow, everything below 1018. That is all Merit Properties. I believe.
I believe that's correct.
Right, any other further discussion? If not hearing any, can I?
I have a, I have a question if anybody, so if we were to grant this, the homeowners who own those houses, would it make their lots more valuable?
It won't make them less valuable.
I don't know that I agree. I think that they would be more valuable to Merit.
Right, okay, so if there's, that, that's my question to answer, thanks.
All right. Can we have a motion?
And I believe there is a county-approved plan on this already.
So I, I would, I'm going to make the motion that we accept the requested zoning.
Which is, Todd?
BR. I gotta pull it up, hold on.
5.02 and MLIM 2.11.
Okay, Mr. Warren's made a motion. And maybe we have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
No.
Ms. German.
No.
Mr. Hafer.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
I would be okay with the left side, but not the right side, so I'll say no.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka. Mr. Halepka. Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Mr. Pirlo.
Me to close myself.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Okay, the motion does not pass. Okay, can I have a second motion unless there needs to be further discussion?
Look, except staff.
Sorry, um, I was going to make an emotion, um, you know, similar to kind of what Park was saying earlier, I would make a motion to accept that portion to the left. As, and I don't know the exact acreage, so I apologize, as they requested MLIM, but not the portion to the right.
Second.
Emily, are you also saying not that little band that connects the two?
Right, correct. I don't want to say right, but yes, correct. Thank you.
Yes.
The band that connects the is actually already border lot, that already borders along MLIM. Because all three of the, the back of their properties is MLIM. So there isn't harm to that, um, since that is already.
Yeah, but they don't need the connection anymore, Katie, that's why. Like, if you're not, if we're not doing the right piece, they don't need that piece to connect anymore.
Doesn't, but I'm just, like I said, playing devil's advocate, what's the harm?
What's the benefit?
All right, right now, we don't have a motion on the floor, so Ms. Brophy made a suggestion, Ms. Panero. All right, right now we don't have a motion on the floor, so Ms. Brophy made a suggestion, Ms. Panero.
It was seconded by Nancy or by, uh, Ms. Wolfson, so. There is a motion.
Ms. Wolfson?
Uh, I thought that, uh, Ms. Brophy made the motion to, um, um, grant, recommend the zoning of the, um, portion on the left-hand side of the screen.
That's right, so I, I did make a motion and Ms. Wolfson did second that, if, if that's okay.
So. So we have a motion and a second, Mr. Array?
No.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka? I think we lost Mr. Halipka. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Recuse myself from the vote.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Halipka is back.
Okay, Mr.? Were you able to hear that motion?
Only parts of it, I abstain.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And Madam Chair, before we continue, can I please remind the board members that if they expect to recuse themselves from any vote, that they should not be addressing the vote or speaking on the issue. Recusal means that they are not to participate, not simply not to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. Okay. Moving on to the next issue, one dash zero one nine. And that was brought up by Mr. Warren.
Yeah, this, this parcel is already been rezoned, uh, and is, uh, is in the part of a large, uh, townhome community, one hundred and eighty-two townhomes. There's a portion of it right now, uh, that is ML, which would only allow for student housing. Um, we'd like that that portion be allowed, not only for student housing, but for, um, to be leased to, to any, to any resident. So the change that we're asking for is, uh, BR for point or oh point one two, and then the DR five point five for, uh, for twelve point three nine acres. Again, this is a development that's already approved and in the process of being built.
Actually, Madam Chair, that's not accurate, there are two separate developments. Southern Crossroads has been approved, this is proposed to be Forge Overlook, which is a separate development on the same. Uh, it is, as Mr. Warren said, it's, uh, ML which allows specifically, uh, purpose-built student housing, but it also includes some faculty housing on the property as, uh, the submission initially presented itself. Staff in part, uh, determined that it's a creative development plan that had been discussed, uh, and actually had gone to the DR Development Review Panel twice without getting through it. Uh, that there was a plan already underway that didn't warrant expanding to the DR five point five. That was part of the, that was substantial part of the basis for the staff's, uh, recommendation not to approve the change.
Thank you, Ms. Lafferty.
Uh, yeah, I was under the, the drawings I see show that they're building houses on their, and their student housing, not opened everyone, so.
I didn't think student housing was allowed on the DR five five.
It's not.
Not the purpose-built student housing. Specific to ML.
But you couldn't, you couldn't build, you couldn't have residential housing in the ML. So it just gives more opportunity for more housing.
Any other discussion?
What's, what's the project, what's the property that we're looking at, I don't know what direction that is in, but just, I guess you left of it.
Uh, Good Shepherd. Todd, what is the property, the Good Shepherd?
Yes. Yep.
That's.
They're demolishing the buildings that exist.
Okay, but that property is currently zoned DR five five as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what the Southern Crossroads project is, where it's going to be built.
Right, so then this issue would match what's already currently zoned there and what's already currently being developed.
There's a development plan that's already been approved all the way up through the ALJ and Board of Appeals for that, uh, other part, the Southern Crossroads piece.
Okay.
And I believe it's more townhomes, I think is what they're.
It's a total of one hundred and eighty-two townhomes for, that they're proposing for everything, so that's, the pictures I've seen were townhomes, so.
What's that piece that's the BR, Todd, that's proposed, do you know? Is there?
I, I think that was a buffer.
Okay.
That was a, I think a sliver correction over there. To kind of match the parcel line with the zone line, so this zone line would scoot over to match this parcel line. Um, so there, there would be a little bit of BR to follow the, the parcel line.
I see, thank you.
I move accept staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the staff's recommendations, Mr. Array?
I already had made a motion, but that's, that's fine.
No, no, no motion was made. Um, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
No.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Heinel? Mr. Halipka?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
No.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Um, it looks like I have seven against and six for, um, staff, is that correct?
Counted six and six.
I have six and six as well as Crystal.
I do too, this is Taylor.
Mr. Heinel fails. So much.
Mr. Heinel, correct?
Who's, who's missing?
Correct, Mr. Heinel is currently absent and Mr. Hinton is currently absent.
You got a vote, Nancy?
Nope, I'm going for no.
We need a new motion, so I'll make the motion that we, the requesters, which is me, motion of BR four point one two and DR for five point five.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel, still not there, Mr. Hinton not here, Mr. Halipka?
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, next on to issue one dash zero two two. And that was brought up by Mr. Warren and Mr. Perlo.
So if, Howard, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll kind of get started. What the plan originally was to do was to try to incentivize development along Security Boulevard. Uh, mostly in an attempt to remove some blight that we have in the community. As always, there's unintended consequences when you do that, is, there were certain things that I thought, uh, by putting the CT on there would be an incentive, it's actually a disincentive, um, in certain areas. So, the motion that, or, or the two areas, there's an area inside the Beltway or to the east of the Beltway, if you'd like, um, we would like to look at that as CCC for all of those, um, all those areas. Except for where there's current AS. We would leave those current sites as AS. So, and then outside the Erdle, which is part of the parcel that we've already talked about, we would leave the, the MLR portion, uh, which is a state, um, Salt Dome and State Police, um, facility, MLR, we'd also leave the two AS, uh, the AS sites, uh, that are there currently, AS, and we would make the rest of the site CT. So it's, it's really a large swath of property, um, with the intention of trying to drive development around them all, that the county has invested a number of our tax dollars into already. And to really grow that area, and we really want, um, you know, there, hopefully a red line comes in the future, but the hope is that we can build some more apartments, higher-end apartments, uh, some, maybe some residential along that corridor, with some amenities. I worked a little with Steve on this today, I don't know, Steve, if I did a good job of outlining what we had talked about, was that?
Maybe, maybe I didn't pick up what you were just saying about on the inside, inside the Beltway. The, what we have is retaining the BMIM, but also putting BMCCC. And then you had proposed the CT outside, which by that map, I presume Jen shows that that's the Town Center extension. So that would fit with the CT over on that side of, the outside of the Beltway.
Right.
So you would be accepting what the staff proposed on inside the Beltway, but adding the CT to the other portions that are now shown in blue, is that right?
Yes.
Except for the, not the AIs.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Um, also, issue one dash zero one seven has already been voted on, so, and that overlaps this issue, so we have to make sure that the zoning that was requested in that area is the same for this issue.
That, that does, that's the BMCCC, so it is included. Right, Mr. Lafferty, I thought we talked about this.
I believe so, I believe so, we can double check that, Jen.
Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe let me say it a little bit clearer, I'll do my best. We're gonna accept the staff recommendations for inside the Beltway. Outside the Beltway, except for the MLR and the existing AS that are out there, we're gonna make it CT, did I say that right, Mr. Lafferty? That said right?
I think so, and it would be the, the BMBL. Well, actually, the one BM piece at the top is not in the uh, CT district, is it? Either is the ML.
Yeah, there's some areas that are shown outside the Town Center boundary.
Well, we've already figured out that we can't move that, so we'll just exclude that from the, from the CT, this, that's what I was told, right, that we can't put that in the CT?
Right.
So, so I would exclude that from the.
So, so then Jen, is it only that one BM piece that's closest to the ramp, it could be CT?
Um, if, you, you're not replacing any of the AS? There's a little piece of AS in that hole right there.
Right, we want to leave the, I don't think the intent was to change the AS.
Okay, so there's a little piece of AS right here and a little piece of AS up here, so the only thing that would be changed over here would be this piece that's showing in green to, um, BMCCC.
CT.
Or CT, CT.
Yep, that's the motion.
Okay.
Cause we already moved that other piece, right, we've already moved that other piece that we were talking about in to the.
One oh seven?
Yeah. No, the, was that one oh seven, it could have been one oh seven, yeah, yeah.
One oh seven.
Yeah.
What about the BM piece to the north, is that staying BM or BMCCC?
BM.
Yeah.
Keeping existing.
I'll second the, I'll second the motion and trust that you guys will work it out. I like the idea.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that we hope everybody clearly understands. And, so Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton? Oh, he's not, I'm sorry, Mr., um, Hilton, is he here still? Heinel, is Mr. Heinel here? Or he's gone for good?
No, he's, yeah, I think he's gone for good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
And Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Okay, now we're going to one dash zero two five, and that was brought up by Mr. Warren and Mr. Perlo.
So I, I'll jump in, this, this was a property that, uh, that Pat wanted to, to bring, uh, there's a, there's a large parcel with a rental property on it. The gentleman across the street has a, a, uh, small construction company and wants to build a garage, uh, on that parcel. The, uh, the zoning that we're looking for on that is BL. There is a large buffer, there's a large stream behind this property, uh, with a bridge and that, before you get to the retail, or to the residential parcels to the back.
Hey Todd, did the owner who, I mean, does the guy who want to build something there, did he get any letters of support from the residents behind this property?
He, again, I just got this on Saturday, so I spent a ton of time on this. But from what I understand, there was no, no one that came out against it, obviously, because it was same to same. But from what I understand from Pat, that he has asked them to reach out to the community and the, the community is supporting this. But again, that's, I got that on Saturday at a, a quick call with Pat, so I don't have a ton of information.
Okay, any questions or if not hearing any, Mr. Warren, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I want to make the motion to make the parcel that is currently DR 5.5 BL for point two three acres.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Array? Mr. Array?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Miss, Mr. Hayfer?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Perlo?
Um, yes.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, the last one in District one dash zero two six, and that was brought up by Ms. Brophy and Mr. Warren.
Ms. Brophy, if you don't mind, I'll jump in here. The community had allowed a zoning change during the last cycle to support, I believe it was a motorcycle repair shop or some kind of motorcycle facility. The, the people decided to not move forward. So the community association would like it to be brought back to BL CCC. So it's currently BLCC point oh one and BR point oh three eight. And we're just requesting BL CCC for the full point three nine acres.
Madam Chair, if I may, there's BL CCC all around the property. Other zoning up and down East Drive as well. And though the staff generally is hamstrung when it's the same, same quest, but we do acknowledge that the surrounding zoning would be consistent then with the change.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. Ms. Brophy, since you brought this issue up, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, Mr. Warren spoke just fine.
Okay.
Thanks for one.
I didn't have to fix it.
If there is no other discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
Come on, Todd, you got it.
I already made the motion. I want to make it BL CCC for whatever that was, point three nine acres.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hayfer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, well, that's the completion of all our issues that were sequestered in District one. Board members, we're going into District two.
Can I make a recommendation? We're supposed to end at seven thirty and it's already seven oh five. Can we? I mean, we have other sessions. Can we make District two? District one went a long time. Can we make District two on another date?
You don't think they're all going to go this long?
I mean, I just, I have a hard stop at seven thirty five. I'm going to be at an event and we're, we're not even we're not going to get through one issue and we're going to be at seven thirty five, so.
Does anyone else have a problem carrying on? I don't.
I'm good with continuing.
Right.
How, how long do you plan to go then? I mean, the, the time said seven thirty five. Do you plan to go to seven thirty five or are you going to go past?
I think what we'll do, Mr. Warren, is at seven thirty five, we'll, we'll take a call and see what everybody wants to do. And if a majority want to get off, then that's what we'll do. But I think right now we're, we'll go to at least till seven thirty five.
I think if we start with D two, we should finish.
Okay. Right. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to mention the issues that were sequestered in District two. And then if we don't have anything we want to add, then we can entertain a motion to accept the staff's recommendations on all the issues that were not sequestered. So the ones sequestered are just off teams. Zero zero one, zero zero three, zero zero four, zero zero five, zero zero six, zero zero seven, zero zero eight, zero zero nine, zero ten, zero twelve, zero thirteen, zero fourteen, zero fifteen, zero sixteen, zero seventeen, zero eighteen, zero twenty one, and zero twenty two. Are there any issues that I did not mention there that someone would like to sequester?
Madam Chair, just a clarification, two dash zero ten. I am not sequestering. I'm just, I just need to recuse myself from that.
Okay, let me just check. Okay, so we're removing ten from that. So ten will now be in the non-sequestered.
I also need to recuse, recuse myself from zero six.
Okay, that's fine, but other people have brought it up. So that stays in a sequestered, in the sequestered.
Yeah, it's Chris, we're just with a process question. If, if people need to recuse themselves and you put it in with the batch of everything else, then, then that doesn't really work. So it's almost like they have, right? Because then they have to recuse themselves from the overall vote on all the issues.
Right, that's why it was removed.
That's like. You recuse yourself from an issue, you cannot discuss it and you cannot vote on it.
Right, so it has to stay on this list or else Mark can't vote, I mean, or else Mark can't vote for the package of, of staff recommendations. If you take it off this list and put it in with the rest of the staff recommendations, he's not going to be able to vote on the whole package.
That's correct. That's why we left it on the list.
Right.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep.
Thanks for, for that. It's all learning. Okay, there we go. Okay, do I have a motion to approve all the issues that have not been sequestered?
Motion.
Be it moved that the planning board accepts the recommendations of the planning board staff for the log of issues in District two with the exception of the sequestered issues listed by Chairwoman Haverd.
We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hayfer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Ms., I'm sorry, they're on the other page, Ms. Wolfson. I'm sorry, I didn't get to that page yet. Ms. Wolf.
I'm used to it, it's okay.
It's on the next page.
Madam Chair, I know everybody's on like a tight timeframe, but do people need a three minute break or something to stretch, get a glass of water?
Yeah, I, I, I still think this is not proper to continue to start a whole nother district with. You know.
I mean, it's taken.
Fifteen minutes. There's fifteen minutes left on the time that we.
Todd, it was probably an error to have put an end time because we don't normally put that in time for any count of planning board meetings, unfortunately. So sorry that that cramped other commitments that people may have.
I would, you know, it's taken us over an hour and a half to get through District one, which had fewer issues than what we have for District two, so. We're looking at nine o'clock if we do it at the same pace.
Later.
So, so.
We won't be done with oh nine by nine o'clock.
Well, can we just suggest that we keep going till seven thirty then? And then can we table the rest of the district but get through what we can get through now?
Seven thirty, what we'll do is we'll see what everybody wants to do. That's what we'll do. We'll take a call and we'll see if more people want to stay on than, than, than want to get off.
Okay.
I have a call.
Like Mr. Lafferty said, when we have a planning board meeting, we don't have a, a, a total stop time. This would be the first time.
Well, it was, it was advertised like that to us, so.
Okay, so instead of discussing this further, can we just start with that two dash zero zero one with Mr. Heckman and Ms. Panero?
Go ahead, Katie.
So I think this sounds like this is a very similar case as to one dash zero zero one that Ms. Brophy sequestered. The current the current location is actually already for apartments in this one residential unit and in this one single, well, wouldn't be a single family home, one standalone unit. And the, it has community support. From what I understand, there was zero anyone against it speaking at the District two work session. And in fact, the community would actually like to see it step out, get passed as what was requested.
Mr. Heckman, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Well, I just would like to add that the community, the Graystone Community Association and a representative of that got up and spoke in favor of this change. And that, that community association represents four hundred homes.
I'm, I'm familiar with this property. And it is a very well established, almost historic rental building, apartment building. He's got four units in there, is that correct? If he gets the sixteen, he would be up to five units. So that would adequately cover him for those units, isn't that correct?
That's, that's what I figure, yeah.
Can I make a motion?
Can make a motion?
The motion is to support the requested zoning of DR sixteen.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German? Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hayfer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren? Mr. Warren? Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Did we lose Mr. Warren?
At least for the minute.
It appears to be dead, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we have two dash zero zero three. It's from Mr. Heckman, Mr. Warren, and Mr. Perlo.
Go ahead, Howard, if you like.
I'm sorry, this is one or two. I apologize. Two. Three. Sorry.
Three.
I just need to see where it is on the map. I believe that this is across from the police station right there on the east side of the property. And that I believe that BL would be a reasonable zoning for it. Pretty much everything on both sides of Milfordville Road as you come up to Slade is, you know, businesses of various types. Dental offices and all kinds of things. I don't think that you know, this would be unreasonable based on everything else that's basically there as you come up to Rice's Town Road right there. So I believe that the BL would be a reasonable request based on everything else that's in the neighborhood.
I was I was going to suggest that the problem is, Howard, that we had a lot of neighborhood associations speak against this. BL because it allows liquor and fast food restaurants and liquor stores and whatnot. I was thinking if we proposed zoning at CB, it ups zones it a little bit, but not to the extent that a BL would. So I was going to move to change the zoning to CB.
Can somebody just give me what CB does allow? I apologize, I don't have my manual here.
It's small commercial businesses serving daily local needs.
I would be okay with that.
Retail service and restaurants, but not taverns and liquor and all that kind of stuff.
And it can also include offices, I guess, if somebody wanted to put a law office there or something.
Possibly retail service.
Is it limited to retail service?
I mean, it says retail, service, and restaurant, except fast food and tavern is basically what it says. And then it just has different setbacks and things like that. Like BL has. Like BL has, BL setback is ten feet from the front property line, forty feet from the street center line. CB is twenty-five feet or average of adjacent buildings within a hundred feet, whichever. So I mean, the setbacks are more stringent on CB. But it does say retail, comma, service, and restaurant. So obviously, law office, I think, is service, Howard. If you agree with that, it should be fine in CB. But I don't know, I mean, planning staff, is that right, if it says service?
I think that's, I would, I, I don't, I can't speak to the zoning office, but I would assume they think that. Insurance agent or someone like that is a service. Or title agent.
No, I'm very happy in Owens Mills. Been there, done that. Um, I guess I'm a little concerned then, you know.
If I can, they're.
With a liquor store, or, you know, packaged goods or whatever. That, I don't think what the intent is. I think if you look at everything else that's along there, there is office. But, you know, there is other industrial along Milfordville Road as you go down towards the subway and all. So it has changed over the years. I just, I'm a little concerned that that limits it a little bit. You know, that if. Somebody wants to come in and run their business, which is not office, could it be a problem?
There is this step between CB and BL, which is BLR.
And what is BOL, BLR allow?
Yeah, the way it reads, Howard, I don't think that addresses your office concern, because this says permitted uses in CB plus fast food tavern, athletic club. I mean, I really think, if you're worried about an office use, I mean, going to BL. Says retail service, bank, tavern, food, etc. I mean, I think the CB that Mark suggested that says service, I think that would cover your office. I don't think you moving up is gonna hit what you're asking for, based on what I'm reading, though. That's what I'm saying. I mean, I'm waiting for, I don't know, planning staff knows specifically, but.
I mean, it currently is OR, so that.
Which is office.
Which is office, small.
Understand, I'm trying to give some other uses to it, like still has. You know, had its problems over the last number of years, and I think it really limits what can be there only to office. And I think that's the concern. I think that there are.
So, under, under CB for uses, it does have offices. It says offices and medical offices, except bail bondsman as defined by state law.
Good, good.
All right, I'll accept the CB. Mark, if you want to make an amendment to it.
Okay, I'm. Um, yeah, I, I moved to change the zoning. For two point nine nine acres to CB.
I'll accept that.
Yes.
Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka had to step away, and I'd like to say we have a new baby. Inten in the group, so he had the best reason to not be here.
Yay.
Um, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
What do we have?
A, a little boy, is that correct, Mr. Array?
Yes, no name yet.
Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Pirlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero? Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Zero, zero, four, and this was brought up by Mr. Pirlo.
Again, this is, you know, an area, Church Lane, a lot of offices that are there. But it sort of limits them to only having office. You know, there is a church across the street. A church that sold their school because it just couldn't operate to a Jewish day school. They are already looking to expand. They have not, you know, looked this way. They actually have looked to the church. To possibly sell them their building. But there are other uses that I believe this part of the area, there's not a lot of housing further down Church Lane. There is, you know, some housing, but this all tends to be office. There is a car detailing shop pretty much right here on the corner of the road that I, that. Runs along Rice's Town Road. I can't think of the name of it right now. So I'd like to see the, the BL. I might consider the CB. But, you know, I do think that I don't want to see it limited, you know, to where it is at this point.
Can we expand the map? To see more of the area? Thank you.
There is some BL there, so.
Yeah, I, Howard, I think staff recommended BL.
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize then. I probably was doing it just to be able to discuss it if it came up with other people sequestering it. And I guess we're with staff recommendation then.
All right, we have staff recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yep.
Mr. Halipka still stepped off?
Yep.
Say back, Mr. Halipka. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis? Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Pirlo? Ms. Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren's off, Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
That passes, thank you. Next, we're going to two dash zero zero five. Mr. Heckman, Mr. Heine is not here, Mr. Warren's not here, and Ms. Panero. So Mr. Heckman and Mrs. Panero.
Go ahead, Katie.
I, I was gonna say, yeah, you could expand on this as well, uh, have the map go out to give a, a true view of the, of the area. I live probably less than two miles from this property. Um, I'm on that road. Probably fifteen, I'm not exaggerating, probably five times a day. Um, my kid's school is all very far away. Um, this, it, it, it was, it, I believe it was a home. That has been, it's been completely updated, looks beautiful on the exterior. It is next to an OR one, it's next to an office. Um, if you go down farther, there is a shopping center, there is a tropical, there is a Kepi's, which is a pizza shop. Uh, and then it continues going down along Falls Road. So this is a, a main corridor. Um, the owners have done a very nice job with the exterior, as I've mentioned. They did speak at the work session, and they had mentioned that they weren't gonna do like the typical antique shop. Um, stuff with, with, you know, sometimes, sometimes, not all antique shops can have some junky stuff sitting outside. Um, they do have the ability, uh, the spaces for five, six parking spots. Um, and I do think it is a, a nice addition to the community.
Okay, Ms. Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, all of that. Um, I also live nearby and. The, the property is subject to the National Registry, it's on the Historic Register, so it has. They will not be allowed to make drastic changes to the building, so I think it's a good use for it.
Okay, then, um, is there any other questions or comments? If not hearing any, Katie, do you want to make a motion?
I guess my motion is to, um, support the requesting of BL for the point two two acres.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Pirlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero? And Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you. We're plugging right along to dash zero zero six. Ms. Brophy, Mr. Heckman, Mr. Pirlo, Ms. Panero, and Mr. Halipka.
Jen, if you'll pull that out a little bit to give a little more context, proximity to Valley Inn to the south. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, so I, I guess I'll start. I mean, there were a few of us that sequestered. So basically, um, as Director Lafferty already mentioned. It, it is already adjacent to the Valley Inn, which is a successful restaurant. And the current petitioner, I think, asking just to use a portion of this for. Um, like an ancillary complimentary use next to it, um, as long as they, you know. Use that existing parking lot, um, the access wouldn't be changed along Falls Road, etc. I would, um, I would recommend that we actually approve the petitioner's request to rezone it to BL.
So just to note, um, I believe we were told by EPS that they had already met with the petitioner. And had told them that the property wasn't developable because it was wetlands.
The entire, the entire portion that they're asking for?
I believe that's what the comments were.
No, I, I got a clarification on that. And actually, the only piece of that entire property that is not in the wetlands is the point eight one that they're requesting. So that, that's about large enough to put a twenty-five hundred square foot building and. And maybe a little more. The problem is, it would not be able to stand alone and support its own parking.
Right.
So, um, there's gonna need to be some sort of covenant or easement. Which I understand the owner already knows about and is already, you know, going to do, had planned on doing that. So, um, also just to note that, um, I think in a subsequent letter, there was. I think the attorney, um, what's his name, Chris Mudd. Uh, suggested that they'd be willing to do BLR instead of BL.
Yeah, that was in the justification letter, but, but Amy, so I'm looking at the EPS comment that was on the website. And it says some environmental concerns, but generally consistent with department goals, priorities, and programs.
We're just talking about the front portion that borders along the parking lot and fault, correct?
Right, mm-hmm, that's right.
The environmental, I'm not certainly no environmental scientist, but the environmental aspect. More towards, um, eighty-three and, um, it might be, uh, Rowan Run or something, yeah, a little area. I would think there isn't too much environmental impact where they are planning to put the property.
I just didn't know if it was actually in the wetlands that Amy was mentioning, but that's not in the comment on EPS. That's on the website. It says like two, one, so I didn't know, Amy, was there like an updated comment that we don't see on the website?
I think Amy had to step out.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I think, but EPS was after that time, Emily. And there was expressed concern about the wetlands portion, not whatever Mark heard. Different, obviously. But I also note from the comments that Public Works says it's deficient sewer, deficient traffic shed. And not a planned service area for water. So all that does not stop a zoning change, it just talks to the development, the, the ability to develop the site. And as Mark was saying, there's a need to address because of a limited development envelope. Obviously gonna have to work out something with Valley Inn or some other parking.
Mr. Lafferty? If the zoning were to, if they were to get their approved, um, the requested zoning that they want. Would the wetlands issue be addressed later down the road? That shouldn't, shouldn't we be concerned with that?
We, well. We get concerned about it because the question is, do you rezone when you can't really make any, you can't develop? But the underlying zoning still would be subjected to whatever the development process is, so you're right. Katie, I mean, it is, they have to go through development review, they have to do all the environmentals, they have to make sure they have adequate parking. Egress, ingress, all those things, all taken care of during the development process.
And MDE, MDE, they are very strict, really, very strict. I know.
And you can see the stream going behind the property, that part of the property, but. But no, that itself is not, that does not determine whether a property can be rezoned.
I will say that the, uh, I believe Ms. Chris Mudd said that this, in, in my notes at least. That, um, the property, the, the, uh, the coffee shop would offer, uh, would operate under off-hours of the Valley Inn. Which is that very, very, very large parking lot, um, which I can say that parking lot does get very crowded at night. But, because my house, I literally think is completely like a, across from six ninety-five right there. So it does get, that parking lot is very large, and it does get very crowded, but certainly not during coffee shop hours. So I can't, um, foresee parking being, um, a concern.
Okay, any, is there any other questions or comments? Mr. Halipka, your name was on here, is there anything you'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay.
Are both this parcel and the Valley Inn owned by the same owner?
Yes.
Will be owned and operated by the Atlas Bridge.
So, Ms. Panero, are you ready to make a motion?
Well, yes. I would like to, uh, support requested zoning for BL of point eight one acres.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Pirlo?
I recluse myself from the boat.
Ms. Panero? Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to two dash zero zero seven. Ms. Brophy, Ms. Pirlo, Ms. Panero, and Ms. Halipka.
So, um, so I guess I'll start, but I do apologize, um, Chairwoman Haver, I have to leave in about ten minutes. So the first thoughts I was having was, um, I mean, I was looking at the notes, um, with planning, it says it is consistent with, um. I'm sorry, there's one document that says it's consistent with master plan, it looked like, and then there was another one that was inconsistent, so I couldn't tell if I was looking at the right piece. But I do like the idea of having. upscale senior housing, which is something that that area really needs, and that looks like that's what the petitioner is looking to get with this zoning on this portion of land. So personally, I mean, I would recommend that we actually approve the zoning requests from the petitioner.
If any other questions or comments?
I would suggest that, I'm not sure if it's senior housing as more, you know, fifty-five and older apartments for them. The piece across the street is senior housing that you'll see in a minute. The suburban club has had some issues as many country clubs have over the last ten or fifteen years. And I believe that this would be financially stabilizing the country club for the community. I believe that the neighborhood is in favor of it. I don't believe there was any major, you know, discussions or complaints. They did have some community meetings in the neighborhood. I think that it, Slade Avenue across the street is all high-rise apartments, mostly condos, co-op as well. There were about fifty townhouses built along Slade Avenue going towards Reisterstown Road, which would be to the northwest. So I do believe it's there. It's not on the side of the street where there is the single-family homes in Dunbarton. And I think that there is a need in Pikesville for people that spend their winters in Florida or wherever, and needing a place to maybe have a second home here in the Pikesville area.
So if I can, Madam Chair, we did receive a couple opposition letters, one being from the Pikesville Township Association. We have some from some individual families in the area. But if I'm not mistaken, I did take a phone call in the past week or so. The Dunbarton Association across the street had a change in leadership, and I believe they were for it prior to, but now they are against it. You know, as currently.
Or against the upzoning of it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, what's?
For what it's worth, I, I agree with Howard. I think senior housing would be a good fit for this site, and it does kind of fit with our twenty thirty master plan goals. What I think, though, is kind of bizarre is the zoning boundary, where it, you know, has that little panhandle stretching to Reisterstown Road, and then it includes the current clubhouse.
Which, no, I don't believe it does, Mark.
So yeah, the, the BLCCC would cover the current clubhouse. The way the REA code is written, it needs to be within a thousand feet of a CCC district. So they need that CCC in order to get the REA one.
Well, I think your alternative is that the club possibly could, you know, not make it. And then you're going to have a hundred and twenty acres of land that needs to be looked at and rezoned. I think that if, you know, the neighborhood came in and said townhouse is there, you'd have a lot more than what you're telling me. I don't, I'm not aware of this letter and the change of leadership. If you want to read it to us, I would let you read it to me, but, you know, I was under the impression that the neighborhood was supportive of this. If you're telling me there's only a few letters, when there's been other issues in Pikesville and along Park Heights and along Sunbrook Lane and other things, there's been sort of an uproar over the last eighteen years or so I've been on this board. So I don't think a few comments, you know, is necessarily negative.
Howard, can I ask a question about the fifty-five and old?
Yep.
Is, is that, so is that a marketing tool, or will those units actually be deeded so that they are required to be fifty-five and older?
They're not being sold as condominiums or apartments, so you don't necessarily need to, I believe, designate anything for it. I think they're going to be targeted. There's a project down the street that was recently finished as an addition in the city, though, not in the county. So costs tend to be higher in the city, right across the line on Slade Avenue. That, you know, I think they're filling up and renting because there is a need. There is a major influx of religious Jewish people from out of the Baltimore area into this area. And I think there is a great need, but it's not going to be targeted at all for families or for young families at that point. This is, I believe, going to be targeted more for, you know, people that are in their fifties, sixties, maybe even into the seventies.
Yeah. I believe it will be deed restricted, and I think the reason for that is they don't want families moving in with children contributing to possibly overcrowding schools. I don't know what the situation is, but that's the reason why they typically do that.
I believe that suburban, and I'm not a member of it, but suburban is hopeful that many of the people that would move into this building would support suburban and be members of it. There's some discussion about having, you know, I don't want to call it discounted membership, but memberships available to the apartment people so that they can use the dining facilities as well as, you know, the club if they want to pay the dues to be able to play tennis, paddle ball, or, you know, golf, if that's their desire.
So Mark, how would, how would we confirm that, that it was, that they were deeded?
I think that's the intent. I don't, I.
I don't think there's been any covenants put on it at this point yet, but the councilman, if that's what he wants to do, can talk to them about that. That's the case. I mean, I'm, you know, fifty-five and older, I see it all the time. All of a sudden, you've got somebody that's forty-seven, and it, you know, possibly has a parent that would like to live in that development that can't because, you know, they happen to have a spouse that might be forty-seven. You know, so sometimes that's a problem, but I think that the intent, if you look at all of the apartments, condos across the street, it's mostly elderly, you know, people like me.
And me.
And me.
So to your point, Beth, I guess what I would just suggest that if the board feels that this should be developable, then whether it's coveted, senior, a pud, something else, that's up to the councilmen to negotiate at that stage in time.
But I think we could approve it as RA E.
That's what I mean, but if, and that suggests that board, the planning board feels it should be intensely developed. I guess what I'm saying, Howard, is, you know, it's not like you're saying, we'll go to DR three five or five five. You're suggesting RA E, and that is a statement of the county council member that you believe intense development is appropriate here.
Could we go to the RA, RA E two and suggest the covenant, you know, with our approval or not, Steve?
We're really not, the, the board's not in a position to attach that kind of condition as far as a covenant. Maybe, I don't, this is my first rodeo on this, so I don't know if it's something that's intransmittal to the council members or not. But yeah, you can go to whatever zoning you think is appropriate. Doesn't have to be what they requested.
I would tell you, Stephen, it is your first rodeo. I've had about four or five. We have always in the past suggested and approved things with a covenant. You know, which that's what the councilman wants.
Okay. Well, if that's, if that's, if that's the board's pleasure, we will transmit that to the council.
The other option is that we could recommend that this be a pud, and then if they go through the pud process, it becomes part of the deal of the approval of the pud, the covenant would.
Mark, you might know, but I thought is the, because there was talk about a merger eight, five, six, seven, eight years ago, and the pud didn't work then, so this is just taking the piece that they want to develop, not putting a pud on the, you know, sort of the whole property at that point. That was my remembrance from the, from the neighborhood discussions. I mean, I think that you are.
So is there a motion, Madam Chair?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion if you might, don't mind.
Please.
Okay. I would move that the requested zoning of BLCCC, the six point five three acres, and the RA E two with a covenant for twelve point six six be approved for this parcel going forward.
Madam Chair, real quick, REA two requires this to be in a CT district, a town center district, and this is not, it's across the street.
So that has to be adjusted.
Okay, well, then we'll take the RA E one then, if that's the concern with the covenant.
So can you specify the covenant, Howard? Are you talking about the covenant to make it senior?
Well, the covenant, if the, if the councilman feels that it should be fifty-five and older, then we would consider that to get the zoning at that point, so.
Can you really put that, that restriction?
Well, again, I don't know that the councilman wants that, but if that's the case, either they accept it or they don't get the, you know, our suggestion of the approval for it. I think it's very important for Pikesville's economic development and redevelopment that there be this senior kind of housing available to our community. There is none, really, anything that's been built in Pikesville was built forty years ago.
Okay. Mr. Perlow, you have a motion that's been modified by Mr. Worley. Do we have a second to Mr. Perlow's motion?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Array?
What is the motion?
Motion is to approve the requested zoning of BLCCC, six point five three, RA E one of twelve point six six, with a covenant, giving the county councilman the ability to negotiate that covenant as to age restriction if he desires it.
May I, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Just so we're clear, currently the DR two would permit thirty-eight houses. Is that correct? And this would increase the density to over five hundred for the RE one? And is it two hundred and forty units for the BLCCC?
Yes, two forty, yes.
So we're going to go from thirty-eight to seven hundred and forty units, correct?
Yep. The, the community discussion meeting that was held talked about around two hundred and forty units, apartment units.
Well, I understand that, but we, we really have to talk about what's permitted, because that's what the change will mean.
Well, the change can't be built, that many units can't be built on four acres. Four point eight four, I'm sorry, well, I'm looking at the wrong line.
Nineteen acres.
Nineteen acres.
Well, I really have a problem for us to put a condition, because we have no such authority to condition the approval. Fifty-five and older, I don't think it is, not for us to make that determination. And I also know that, looking at my notes, there was, you know, great support, you know, at the meetings, at the hearings, there was great community support also, but I do not think that we should condition our approval for fifty-five and all, because we don't have any such standing to this.
Well, there are many apartment projects up on Hooks Lane and up towards Reisterstown Road where Lenny's is that provide for the families in the community. There are condominiums up on Hooks Lane as well, both Green Tree and added Woods. Added Woods does have some very old high-rise condominiums, but this is something that would be new and fresh for the community. And having the ability to hopefully tie in with the club for membership, I think, provides a, a very nice apartment amenity for these people that would move into this building.
In the past, we have done covenants, but the bottom line is, we all know the council has the right to do whatever they want. So we have a motion and we have a second. Is there anything we need to discuss before we go for a vote? Okay, then let's, let's go for a vote, and then what we should do is we should talk about moving forward for the rest of the evening. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No, I, I really like this project, but I think the pud's the way to go, so I'm going to say no.
Mr. Halepka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Perlow?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Mr. Warren is yes also.
Oh, okay, Mr. Warren. And Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. So we're at four minutes till eight o'clock. We've done a very good job. We've gone through about one-fourth or a little more than, almost a half of the items, three more, well, two more, and would have half of the items. So do you want to table this? But then we'll add another meeting if we do that. Does everybody understand that if we keep pushing this back, we add another meeting?
Well, can we do it on Thursday? Because we're only supposed to cover one district, and I don't think, as, as of today, there are no sequestered issues for Thursday's meeting, so that almost seems logical.
Well, the deadline for sequestering is until four o'clock.
Till tomorrow.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
I would suggest, if you're going to do this, to move it to Thursday. We've already posted all the work sessions online, and we did not have another date indicated.
Okay, well, that, that does bring up an issue, folks. I mean, they post online that we're all going to be meeting and, and going through these issues, so. It's, you know, we've told the public, they've let the public know. So why don't we see how many people can stay on? I'm going to call your name, and if, just say you can stay or you can't. Mr. Array?
I will stay.
Ms. Brophy?
Sorry, I cannot.
Ms. German?
I can stay.
Mr. Hafer?
I cannot.
Mr. Heckman?
I can.
You can or cannot?
I can.
Mr. Halepka?
I can't.
Cannot. Cannot. Mr. Johnson?
I can't. I'm in a conference.
Mr. McGinnis?
Can.
Mr. Perlow?
I can probably give another half hour, forty minutes.
Ms. Panero?
No.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Ms. Wolfson?
I can, I can stay.
So we have one, two, three, four, five people that can stay, and we have one, two, two, three, four, five, six people that have to go. So, Mr. Lafferty, I'm going to need your assistance on this. How, how do you think we should handle it?
Well, Madam Chair, as a work session, you don't need to have a forum of the board, but when you only have five or six people, and there's so many others who I'm sure would run away in, I'm not sure that continuing really is, is successful. I don't know. I just sent a message to Ms. Nantay whether or not.
Can everybody turn off your, your talking right now so we can hear Mr. Lafferty, please? Thank you. Mr. Lafferty, continue.
So I don't, I don't know that there's sufficient number of people to continue tonight. District five is Thursday. District five is Thursday, and there were a hundred-and-eighty-nine issues filed for district five. And while we don't have any sequestered items yet, the board, I, I don't know what kind of issues they may come up with in the next twenty-four hours. And whether we can then put district two, the balance, onto the meeting on the eighteenth, which also is a regular board meeting. Because district three is likely to also generate a lot of questions on the sixteenth.
Well, board members, I mean, can you, if, if you don't, when we have planning board member meetings like this, especially ones that can go on for a long time, is everybody free on Thursday night where they don't have a drop-off time by seven, eight o'clock? We might have to go a little longer.
So can we start earlier than we did today?
Nancy, me and Amy, so historically, we have always, you know, again, we post these online, we post the start time online, we, we post which districts are being heard which nights. I think if we need to add a second district to the fifth district on Thursday, we can. But we really need to try to follow the schedule that we've set. We have historically always done it this way. Planning board members have known that they had to stay for the balance of the time. That's just the way it is to get through all of these issues.
Yeah.
I, I, I hear you.
Do you want to add Wednesday, I mean, for Thursday night?
Would it, would it make sense to start earlier on Thursday night, like Mr. Array just mentioned?
We've posted that they start at five-thirty. Staff, you know, has made arrangements and schedules for it starting at five-thirty. I, you know, I, I don't, there's no real precedent for it, so I, I don't really know.
We think we need to start at five-thirty.
Start at five-thirty.
Since that's publicly posted.
But, no, to answer your, and, and sorry, Director, to answer your question also, Chairman Hefford, yeah, I apologize, this is my first C Z M P. I didn't realize that the time slot on the calendar was not hard and fast, but I'm, I'm prepared to stay longer for the other ones now that I know. So I do apologize for that.
Go ahead, Nancy, I'm sorry.
I'm asking all the board members to do whatever they possibly plan to clear their schedule for next week. So we get these meetings back on schedule, we don't inconvenience the public or the planning staff. So I'd appreciate that, thank you.
And the next work session is this Thursday.
Is it also going to be virtual?
Yes, all of the work sessions are virtual.
Okay.
Was there some reason that we made them all virtual? I personally always felt that being in the hearing room with all of our members together gave us the ability to talk to each other. I find it difficult sometimes to, to do that on a virtual discussion group.
I do agree, that, but that's, I really support that, so I don't know what I.
I think staff tried to take into account the fact that these historically run long, and there are, there could be as many as seven of them. We tried to condense them down, but from a perspective of fatigue and staff time, we felt that holding them virtually would make it a little bit easier for everyone involved.
No, but it was not discussed with us from changes that have been on the board for a long time. I sort of feel like the whole process has been consolidated in a much shorter time that we actually took our votes, I thought, in June, not in May, and had more time to schedule them as separate meetings with each district. And, you know, I think that, you know, I was away not knowing that it was going to be February dates for some of the hearings. I would have liked to have been there, and I just felt like it had always been in March, and that's when I knew it would, I thought it was going to be. And we ended up having a lot of them in February.
Okay, great. For now, people have to get off. Some of our board, board members have mentioned they've got to leave now. We, we've got in front of us what we have in front of us. Our next meeting is this Thursday, it's going to be virtual. And what we'll do is, Amy, if this is correct, we'll start with district two and then we'll go into district five. And we just all have to be ready for a little longer evening.
That's correct.
Okay, if there's nothing else, let's see here, I'm going to read the last page. Okay.
Madam Chair, may I ask, just adding numbers generally, the number of items that have been sequestered in these two districts was well over half, about half of the total number of issues that were filed. And the question is, what could or should we have done differently to address the questions or concerns board members have so we can cut down on the sequestered items? And not trying to cut off any debate discussion, but when well over half of the issues have been sequestered, there's, to me, it's a suggestion that either we may not have provided sufficient information, or there are questions that we need to try to vet ahead of time. And as to Howard's point, the county council changed the code last year to move it to February so we would have the opportunity for public input before recommendations were made. If we need to consider four years from now, pushing the work session back further into April so we can still get the recommendations of the council in June as required, that could be something to be taken up after this series of work sessions and votes. But if there's something we should have done different, or better, don't have to answer it now, I'd welcome to hear that so that we can help you all get through these issues more easily.
Steve, I would say fifteen years ago, there were four, five hundred issues rather than the three hundred we had. And we had, I would think, just as many percentage-wise of sequestered, but doing it one each night, you know, seemed to work better, and we got through that district, you know, whatever the time was. I don't remember if we started at four or five-thirty, but, you know, I would tell you that I was, I skipped eleven, the old board meeting tonight because I wanted to be here. You know, I had a three o'clock call and I rushed home to take this call so that I could be at least comfortable, you know, on this call. You know, so I might not be as comfortable in the office, but I do think things moved a little bit better in the offices in past years, in the, in the conference room, whatever.
Steve, I, thank you for asking that question. I'll, I'll be honest, the reason I sequestered so many in my, in my district is because the planning staff recommendations were kind of silent. I mean, there was no reason given for why you, on most of these issues, staff recommended no change. And I kind of wanted to hear why. So that's why I sequestered so many.
And I agree, I agree with that. I agree with that, Mark. There were, I had the, and I, maybe it's not practical, I mean, Lord knows the staff works so hard, but I, I had the same question, if there was no change recommended, why? I just think it was important for us to know that.
Well, in our district, we've already had a chance for the people to question and talk with the councilman. So I don't know how many other districts did that, but everybody's had a chance to do it at least once in our district.
I think they've done it in most districts, Mr. McGinnis.
Anyway, so, yeah, we need to think about, thanks, Mark, thanks, Bev.
So, so Mark, so what you're saying is that you want additional explanation when they say no change, you want to know why there's no change? And that would, okay.
I mean, yeah, there's, you get little glimpses in the staff report, like it's incompatible with a master plan twenty-thirty or something like that. But it takes a long time to go through all of that information if it was just like right there available to us.
I, I appreciate that, Mark, and I really applaud all the thoughtful work that the planning board members have put in because I know each of you really invest a lot of time in going through these issues. Like you say, you want to understand the reasoning, and that's totally appropriate. Appreciate that. Sorry, Nancy, didn't mean to hide.
I know, you're, this is very, very important. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Wolfson, nobody can hear you.
I just have to applaud the website that is posted with all the C Z M P map and how accessible all that information is. And those explanations are in great, you know, detail, they're objective, you know, and, you know, if you take the time to really go through it, which, you know, you know, I think we have an obligation to do before we sequester things, it answers a lot of our questions. So I really want to thank the staff for all they've done to make this very easy to access.
Thank you for that comment, Ms. Wolfson. All right, any other questions, comments? Not hearing in, go ahead.
So, Madam Chair, going back to what, what, I think it was Howard, maybe Howard said this, that what can we do? Like, like, you know, we did district by district, one a day, is that possible? Like district five, they have so many issues. So can we do like one district a day, just like we did, you know, during the hearings?
Right now, Mr. Array, next week, we just have district five, don't we, Amy?
Thursday.
You just added number two, the balance of two.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right, that, but we only had five, we had one next week.
No, we have two.
We have five and six next week.
We have three and four and then.
Oh, three and four, I'm sorry, three and four.
And then six and seven.
Yes.
And this Thursday, we have, you know, the remainder of two plus five, right?
I don't.
Yeah. Yes.
I'm only currently sequestering two for district five, so.
Well, we're in three and four next week.
No, I'm talking about Thursday.
Okay.
I don't know if we can do anything at this late a notice, Mr. Array, to make changes. I really don't. I think next week, we just have to add two on. And then, Amy, are all the meetings posted for the rest of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Step away, but yes, all of them have already been posted.
Okay. So we, we might just have, we just have to take it as it is. It's going to be longer evenings. I don't, I don't know, since it's already been out there to the public.
So going back to what Kathy just said about the website, so Mark, since you have so many of these issues and questions, would you be appropriate for you to visit the website and try?
Mark is gone.
Oh, he's gone?
Yep.
Okay.
But I think we can wrap it for the night, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, well, this is it. We'll see you next week. Remember?
Thursday.
The Thursday, I'm sorry.
She's tired.
Understand.
See you all. She's muted.
See you in two days.
Yeah.
From here.
Thanks, everybody.